Hello, this is Ashley Smith, the Canyon City Mayor. I would like to welcome everybody to September 21st regular city council meeting. We'll go ahead and start the roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Haques.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith, absent. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. And let's all rise for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any council member announcements? Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a vision committee meeting this Wednesday, starting at five in these chambers, and we'll be talking about the scintillating subject of tax collection.
I'm excited.
I'm excited, too, because I think this has been on our agenda. This will be the third time, at least, and it's time to move it on to the next level.
And I do have one other thing to share. Today, I did go to the 911 dispatch center there at the county courthouse building and sat in with the dispatchers for about two hours to see what they're, what things look like to them. And it's all about information and technology. They do a heck of a job, the dispatchers, for both Canyon City, the county municipalities, and now Custer County also. And it is, it can, you can see, although it didn't get that way today, but you can see where it can easily become very challenging. And also, the, with sometimes, I'm sure, with the life and death situations that the dispatchers have to deal with, just from their side of the equation, it can be, it can be emotionally pretty rough. And it was, it was good to sit in with them, and they do a good job for us, and I'd like to say thank you.
Thanks for that report. Any other announcements from council members?
I guess I will. I'll try this. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick and I had the opportunity to participate in the, and I need help with some of this. It was the Vision 2040? Picture Canyon City 2040? Yeah, Picture Canyon City 2040, which was conducted at the Abbey. And there was 10, something like 10 residents that showed up. But, and 25 or 35, depending on when you looked at, residents that participated online. Essentially, they posed questions to us that were a result of the questions that they accumulated from online. So they took those questions as a beginning base to ask us different types of issues in terms of what we thought was important, and to rate those. Like housing. Housing just typically kept floating to the top with either however you want to look at it. Affordable housing, available housing, types of housing. Housing issues just seemed to keep coming to the top of the, of the, of the whole process. And infrastructure kind of came up a little bit. But those results are going to be available soon, aren't they? In terms of...
Yeah, they will be, and we'll actually have some presentations to council from the consulting firm in October. So we're, I'll be talking about that a little bit later in my administrator's report.
I think the positive thing that COVID has shown us is that we can still communicate and be open and gather information. The challenge is, is that there are some people that are either technology challenged or don't have technology available, and we need to make for sure we continue to recognize that and deal with that appropriately. But, you know, it was a good session. I, good from a standpoint that you never know what the outcome's going to be until you're done, so.
So I want to kind of piggyback on what you said. I did mine online, my survey online. But when I heard you say just now that people don't have technology at home, it's very true. There are some people who don't have technology, or they don't have internet capabilities. But I think it's important to remember that our libraries do, and that maybe we can remind our citizens that they can always go to the library. You know, if they're interested in, you know, giving back or giving their information, they can always use other resources that we already have available.
So if somebody is interested in contributing their opinions on the future of Canyon City, you can still go to picturecanyoncity2040.com. And you can also come to City Hall and get a kit or a packet to do that as well. Not just for yourself, but maybe for a community group or a church group, to encourage you to get your voice out there, so we can plan our future according to your wishes.
Yeah, I just, to follow up on that, the online survey will be available until the end of the month. That's picturecanyoncity2040.com. And then we also have a mapping tool, map.social, that's at the same website, picturecanyoncity2040.com. And that mapping tool will be open the entire time that we're doing this comprehensive plan process.
Excellent. Any other announcements? Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Administrator Stevens?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 6A is the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on September 8th, the special city council meeting on September 10th, and the general government meeting on September 9th. 6B awards bid number 3820 for a co-responder vehicle leased to Larry H. Miller Chrysler Dodge for a Jeep Ram, in an amount not to exceed $39,532.20. 6C awards bid number 3720 to VacAll for a combination Jet Vac Truck to Neverest Equipment Company, in an amount not to exceed $516,622.57. 6D awards Stan Tech Consulting Services, the Brownfield multipurpose consultant contract. 6E is a declaration of found bicycles as surplus. 6F is the monthly budget summary for July of 2020, and 6G is to receive and file a list of bills.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Did it show up over there? Because my light did not show up. Okay.
We were working with her thing.
It worked.
Okay, so on items D and C, it says that all other vehicles were demoed, were bid out. And I don't dispute that it was, but I don't see any documentation that it was done.
On B and C?
Yeah.
So those were through Sourcewell, so that's like a state bid or GSA?
So do we not see those?
They're, they're already pre-approved through, through either the state or the federal bids, and that's approved through the bid purchasing policy.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't a new standard that was coming down the pipeline.
No, this has always been the standard.
Okay.
So you'll see the bid tab when we don't use state or federal bid.
Okay. All right, and then also, I just wanted to say that I was glad to see that Palace Drug was where we purchased a lot of gloves and hand sanitizer. Were those grant funds that were used for those?
For, they should have been, and...
It was listed under general fund.
I'm pretty sure it is grant funds that...
Usually, they have the COVID designation before them, but if that wasn't the case, I can double check.
And I specifically had a conversation with Brandy Fowler, who got grant money from Martin Marietta, Newmont Mining. And she, her source was Palace Drug to get those for the kits for small businesses.
That's, that's great. Is it supposed to be under general funds, or, okay?
Yes, so all the CARES Act funding will be flowing through the general fund.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Meisner?
Just to write off quickly, I got a couple of questions. But there was a purchase later on for gloves and masks from an online source, so...
So we're trying to buy local when we can, but we are buying large quantities, and we can't always source those locally, especially with the PPE.
And then on the Vac Truck, we're, we're not actually going to get possession and pay for that this year. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
So, I know Tammy's not here to confuse me, but...
Oh, the other Tammy.
We allocated money for that in this budget, did we not?
We did not.
Really?
For the Vac Truck? Because when we, when we did the original budget in 2020, or 2019 for 2020, council had not approved any of the rate increases. That was done in January. So when we approved the budgets, there, there was no revenue for a Vac Truck for purchase this year.
I remember that we were going to purchase it in the fall and hire the employees, and so that would be ready to get up and going after the ditches were turned off.
Yeah, so, so the goal is to have it in possession in January. It will hit the 2021 budget. We are working, we have a job position out for the supervisor and operator of that truck. So we'll, we'll get them hired, get them trained on city processes, and have them work on a plan for, basically, a maintenance, preventive maintenance plan for the rest of this year. So when the, with the truck gets here in January, they can hit the ground running.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, Ryan, on the, I was looking at the receive and file list of bills on page three, and we had a couple of bills there for, for our canine officers. One was for food, which was pretty minimal. You know, 155, 156 bucks. But about a third of the way down the page, we had canine dental service for almost $3,700.
Yeah, I saw that, too. I was like, what?
And, and so, so my question is, did, we, could, do you know the arrangements we have for veterinarian for those animals? Because, because where I want to go with this is eventually ask the question, are we bidding this service out? Is there something specialized? It seems to me that 3,600 bucks for cleaning dogs' teeth, if that's what it was, which I'm assuming...
Even for anesthesia and pulling teeth, which I've recently done for my dog onyx, that's still quite a bit of money. Every single dog needed it.
Well, I assumed it was for both dogs.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we bid that, bid that out or not. We do actually have Tammy Wagner on the phone. She might be able to answer that question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamrick. We actually had to take Duke, and he actually cracked and broke one of his front canines. He is one of our patrol dogs. That's one of those repairs that's not cheap at all, unfortunately. The normal price that I was provided through Johnson's Canine is usually about $5,200. And the vet that they went through, and unfortunately, I don't have that information in front of me right here, was a little bit less, which was at 3,600. So he had to go into surgery, actually have to have the tooth repaired, because that was his front right canine. Unfortunately, like I said, those are not, when it comes to those dogs, it's not a cheap repair, unfortunately.
It is what it is. Thank you for that, and that's what I was asking for, is additional information.
Not a problem. Thank you.
May I ask if Duke was fighting to protect Canyon City when he broke his canine?
Unfortunately, it wasn't. We don't know how that happened with dogs, and he is a little bit older. He's either seven or eight, so he's up toward the top end of his age bracket. So it's not sure how he actually broke that tooth. The vet, when he went for a vet visit, his normal vet visit, the vet actually found that. So it was one of those things, it was such, it was such a light break that it wasn't even affecting him at this point, but would have started to affect him in the near future.
Thank you for being here to clarify that for us, Tammy.
Not a problem.
Did you have more questions, Mayor Pro Tim? And Councilmember Meisner?
I do, but I'm going to wait until the administrator's report. I got a question.
And Councilmember Haques?
Well, we're on the subject about the dogs. Do we have it? And if we don't, we need to look at getting it, line item budget, just for that purpose. For the, for, you know, we have, we have the ones for the uniforms and all this other stuff. But now that we're getting things like that, we need to look at where, I know it's difficult to say how much you want to have, but I think we need to start budgeting a certain amount of money, so it'll be handy, you know, when it's there.
Yeah, I do believe we have a line item in the budget for that. If not, we will make one. But I believe...
I've never seen one.
The other, the other thing I might suggest, and, and just something maybe to look at, is pet insurance. You know, if these dogs are, I mean, they would obviously be in a chance of being hurt more often, and, and that might just be something that could save the city a few dollars.
Can you do that for a commercial dog?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I, I don't know on that, Jim. I know, I know that professional retrievers, the people, I mean, are the, you know, at the highest level, they get it, so.
Yeah, put him on the employee plan. He's got a name. See how long it takes him to catch it? Other than you're taking him to the vet. They probably wouldn't appreciate that.
My other question deals with the lease that we got. I know the thing says we leased it from Chrysler Deep Dodge Jeep Ram, but we're actually leasing a Grand Cherokee. We're not leasing a Dodge vehicle, right? Because if I'm looking at the other invoice, the other invoice does indicate that it's a Grand Jeep Cherokee Laredo, four by four.
I believe, excuse me, it's, so Councilman Haques, I think it's, the confusion is it's Larry H. Miller Chrysler Dodge.
I know that, I can see, I can see that. What I'm saying is, we actually want everybody to know, we are leasing a Jeep Grand Cherokee. We're not leasing a Dodge Ram, okay? That's my purpose for this, okay?
Thank you.
I understand that. And then my next question with that is, knowing how most leases go, it says we're going to lease it for two years, and then after two years, we will own it. The knowledge I have with leases is you can lease for a certain amount of time. At the end of that time, you purchase it for a certain amount.
Yes, sir.
So what are we purchasing this vehicle for at the end of the two-year period?
I believe we purchase it for a dollar at the end of the two years. But the actual lease agreements will come before council at a different time. This is just to authorize the purchase, so we can finish the lease agreements, and we will be working with a local bank to finalize those. Both the lease for the Grand Cherokee, as well as the lease for the Vac Truck.
Okay, now my next question, we're still with the, with the Jeep. I see in here, there's a deal in here that says, it says Pathfinder handheld siren. I mean, I've never heard of a handheld siren.
See, Tammy, do you want to take that one? The handheld siren for the Jeep? I'm not familiar with that, and...
Mm-hmm, I'll have to look at that. I don't have that paperwork in front of me. I may have to ask Jim Johnson to get back to you on that one. I don't have that paperwork.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get back to you.
Okay, yeah, because I've never, I've never heard of a handheld siren.
Yeah, it's a good, good question. I didn't catch that one.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, too, Ryan. On the water revenues, under other non-operating revenue, it says we are above anticipated budget by over $245,000. And I was curious, where is that revenue coming from?
Where are you at? What page?
Under the water fund revenues. It's not numbered in a page.
I didn't think any of the water was over. But there were 51%.
Well, it's their revenue for non-operating. I just didn't know if that was because we put in that extra tap-in for bulk water sales, or something else.
Is the, Madam Mayor, could that be the, could that be, would that be an interdepartmental fund transfer to pay back a two-way loan?
I will double-check this, but I know we received the check from Black Hills for the donation, and it may have been appropriately put to that line item.
Oh, that would make sense, because that's about the right number for that. And then my next one was about, under the detailed purchase on P-cards, was for the library DVDs. That was $870. And I was curious if the library had an interest, or if there's even an availability for a streaming service? I mean, they already have a service where patrons can download eBooks and audiobooks. Is there a service where patrons can also stream movies or television shows through the library for free?
That's a good question. I could certainly ask our library director and see.
So it's kind of where we're moving to, since nobody really, well, some people still buy DVDs, but it's kind of, it's kind of exiting, and that might be a nice thing to do. Okay, any other questions at this time? Councilmember Reed?
Ryan, I just have a question on the card dispersment on page three. I'm, I'm assuming for the COVID-19 laptop workstations and dock units, those are probably going to be covered by CARES funds, correct?
That's correct.
Do we have any, I mean, has any of that funding come down? Or do we have an expected date to get some of that?
We've submitted our first request, and working on, I guess, some of the restrictions seem to be breaking up a little bit, and there's some things that are open to a little bit more interpretation. So Brandy Fowler, our grant writer, has a meeting with the Department of Local Affairs tomorrow to get some clarification on a few things. But we're continuing to work on, on that side of it, and we're hoping to have some additional grant opportunities, both for businesses and citizens, hopefully later this month or beginning of October.
Is that going to be ongoing for, I mean, is there kind of an ETA as far as, like, how long we're going to have to submit things for CARES funding?
The CARES funding, we have to return it by the end of the year.
Okay.
So if we, if we don't use it, we lose it.
And that's actually a really huge challenge for us, because that is not very long for us to be able to maybe have those grants for our businesses or nonprofits, especially since they still haven't decided how we can or cannot use it, right? So far, that spending or the restrictions have been so severe that there's not much we can actually use that CARES Act funding for. And so like Ryan said, just recently, like, oh, well, okay, now we've changed our mind again, and we're going to ease up on some restrictions. But you still have to spend it by December, which is almost impossible.
Which is interesting that you mentioned as far as opportunities for businesses, too, because I've been talking to some business owners, and it's interesting, because it was pretty easy to identify that first wave of big hits, the businesses that were completely closed. But businesses are going to continue to see wave after wave in different industry for a long time, unfortunately. And so it's unfortunate that that has to happen by the end of the year, because there are businesses that are not going to see exactly what this has done until the end of fourth quarter, beginning of first quarter, so.
And it's the same for municipality. And I know Ryan and I both have, and the county as well, and I'm sure Brandy, speaking with Dola tomorrow, we are really petitioning hard for an extension on that deadline, because the cost of COVID is not, like you said, it's not going to end on December 31st. We really need to have an extension for that. So, yeah, we've been petitioning our elected, our higher-up elected officials and the powers that we can to make that influence. And I think CML is doing the same on our behalf. If we are done with our questions and discussion, I would like to ask for a motion from city council to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda and the consent agenda for September 21st, 2020.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haques?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you. Administrator Stevens, we're ready for your report.
All right. We did have a water leak at 349 Sunlight Way. It was a pinhole in a three-quarter inch copper line service. It's about a 15-to-20-year-old line. We're looking into that to see if there's, you know, we're thinking that when it was compacted, it may have been compacted too much, or there might have been, you know, some compression that happened there, causing some corrosion there to cause that pinhole. The hydrant exercise program, that's almost completed. We should be done with that by the end of this week. And going on to finance, we are working on the budget for next year. We do anticipate to have the first draft to council by October 1st. So we're wrapping up, you know, that part of it right now. We're anticipating to bring the budget hearing to council, and what we would ask is to cancel the vision committee meeting in October, and in its place, hold a city council hearing for the budget. That way, we can dedicate, you know, the time to it, rather than try and fit it into a regular city council meeting. Parks department's continuing to work on the tunnel drive connection. Splash pad closed over Labor Day weekend. That was, you know, bright spots in the mix of coronavirus being able to open. We did use a reservation system during that time, and the reservation system seemed to work out very well. So very excited about that. We also had the fencing around the splash pad that, which seemed to work very well as well. And the fencing might be something that we look at continuing on with in the future. We, the city vehicles that the council approved as surplus a couple meetings ago, those are on gov deals. Our mowing crews are continuing to do maintenance along the highway and throughout the city. We talked about the Picture Canyon City 2040 and the, all the public engagement that happened last week. We do have Household Levine. They would like to come back and talk to council and Planning Commission to do the next debrief. What we're looking at is actually October 14th. And again, what we would recommend would be canceling the general government meeting on the 7th, because we're going to be having police chief interviews that week, and doing a special meeting to accommodate the comprehensive plan presentation on the 14th. So I'd like to get feedback from council to see if you have any problems with that arrangement or that suggestion.
So on October 14th, we have interviews and Household Levine?
We, we could. What we would like to do is schedule them for the 14th. The interviews with the police chief, that'll be the 8th and 9th of October.
And what time would that meeting be?
With Household Levine, we could schedule it in the evening, just like this general government meeting. So either 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, depending on what council prefers.
So the 14th is Household Levine debriefing for general government meeting? If we want to do that, it's nice, I think, to consolidate, so we don't have additional meetings during our week. So that's October 14th, same time, 5:00.
Is what?
Household Levine debrief.
So that'd be, yeah, the comprehensive plan debrief.
And then October 7th and 8th?
October 7th, we would just cancel that meeting, and then the interviews for the police chief will actually be taking place on the 9th.
And then city council will have an opportunity to participate in the interviews?
Yeah, what we're working on doing is putting council members in different interview groups. If we have all the council members in, in one interview session, that would trigger a public meeting, so.
And, and is that during the day as well?
That would be during the day, so I know not everybody would, might be able to participate in that.
What day?
Friday, the 9th.
Of October?
Of October.
I can make the 9th work.
I could try to take the day off.
If it's only an hour or two, probably?
Well, we've got four candidates, so it's going to be, it would be probably an all-day.
All-day?
Yeah.
I could, I could make it work.
And Ryan, for your information, I will be out of the loop for the first two weeks in October. That's why my wife's going to go through her surgery that we've been waiting on for quite a while, so.
Okay.
So I'll be out for the first two weeks in October.
Thank you for letting me know, sir.
And best wishes to her, too, and her surgery and recovery. That's, so it sounds like we've got some scheduling done, then?
So you will let us know via email, the time slots?
Yep, we'll be finalizing all of that. I needed to talk to you tonight, but we'll be finalizing that tomorrow.
Okay.
Councilmember Meisner.
We still haven't selected a date for the community funding. Right? Or have we?
Not that I have seen.
Because I, I need to know that date so that I can...
I also wanna be at that.
Okay.
Just John and I.
Are there dates that work better for you?
No, of course you can go, Dolly.
I'll, I'll have Tammy send out a couple.
Tuesdays are not good for me.
Okay.
But if I do a Tuesday, Dolly's gonna have to sit in for me.
Tuesday, Tuesday works great for me.
I'll, I'll have Tammy send out an email coordinating that.
And all council members are welcome to join in that. It's actually really fun to be able to hear from so many people that are passionate about our community and that are serving a lot of our most vulnerable populations, and it's, it's been a pretty inspiring day, meet a lot of local heroes. Mayor Protem Hamrick, did you have a question?
And not a question, but I would like to point out that the, at the last CRCA board meeting earlier this week, that was intended to be a budget meeting, but because this is the first cycle, the new director is going through on the budget process, things are a little bit out of joint, and the, the expectation of, of all involved at CRCA is that next year, the budget should be done by August, by the end of August, so that can be input to all the, not only our budget, but all the jurisdiction budgets.
Yep, and we, we currently have a placeholder in there for our contribution.
Keep that confidential.
But how much? Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Are there any other questions from council?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Couple of questions. One, on the fire hydrant service, whatever you call it, exercising?
Yep.
My compliments to the water department, even though this comes off as a negative comment, but they actually didn't wash all the gravel off of the front of my yard into my lawn this year, which is, I don't think it's ever happened. So I haven't had a call in, I haven't come out and cleaned up all the gravel, so I appreciate them. Either by accident or intention, it was accomplished. Second of all is, is last meeting, I had made a, what I thought was a request to do a comparison on this water meter conversion that we did, and I see in here that we did a, a, a software upgrade for thousands of dollars. Those types of things need to get included in that conversion cost.
Yeah, and we do have, our water superintendent is working on that analysis for you.
And then, I know this is out of your hands, but I wish it wasn't. That light at 15th and RGB is... You think that could change the timing of the amount of time that it stays green on RGB?
It's not just RGB, it's gotten worse since they came out.
I mean, it's crazy, and there's, I guess the other thing is, is there's no traffic. I could understand it if, you know, we were letting three minutes of solid traffic go through, but the light turns green, 15, 20 cars go through, and then there's nobody. I would think there'd be some computer technology that would say, hey, no cars are coming, turn red.
Have you sat at Third Street recently?
At Third Street? Yeah, I go to Third Street almost every day.
Forever. I live right there, so I, I, that's the only way I can get onto the highway. And when, I, I will tell you, I was very frustrated, because I couldn't get through Main Street, I couldn't get through anywhere on 9th Street. The only way that I was able to go over to pick up my daughter from school was to take the highway. And to sit at that light for five minutes when there's no traffic going through is infuriating.
That's what's crazy.
It's very frustrating.
Happy to bring it up again with CDOT. I noticed the same thing at 9th and RGB today.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just...
The time, timing seems to be getting longer and longer.
Yeah.
Bring Cory in to fill the thing, tell him that.
Yeah, come on Cory. Bring in the strong arm.
Good sport. Happy to do so.
Playing with CDOT lately?
Always an adventure.
Well, I would like to go ahead and open up a discussion for item 8A, and that's an introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 19, Series of 2020, entitled Establishing the Naming and Memorial Committee. Would you like to open that discussion up, Ryan?
Absolutely. We, we've had several requests recently with the passing of some community members, prominent names in, in the community, one of them being former Chief Stefanik, about naming a building after Chief Stefanik. And when we went back and looked through our regulations, we didn't have a process or procedure to accommodate a request like that. So what we have done is put forward a resolution for council to consider. We, we would like to, you know, not only take into account the, the naming of buildings or streets, but also some of the policies that we have around dedicating memorials, whether they're benches or statues as well, and forming this committee so it can make recommendations to council.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Just one suggestion on that, on page two of the resolution itself, under Section 5, says the application process. I suggest that be changed to applications for consideration of names and/or memorials will be as follows, rather than accepted by.
Any other recommendations? Councilmember Meisner?
On page three, item three, 30 days seems to me like you're gonna need to have that being a top priority item to get it done in 30 days. I mean, that timeframe just doesn't seem reasonable to get it in, to start to work on it, and then to get it, to get it to council within, you know, council schedule. I would think 60 or 90's gotta be more appropriate with the timeframe.
Well, that makes sense, especially since they've already had to wait two years. It's not like time is of the essence.
So, so I, I think this is, this is maybe a wording issue, the way I read that, and I think the way it's intended, is that once the...
Once the recommendation has been made.
Once the recommendation has been made, that then it will be placed on the city council within 30 days. But there are no time limits to make the recommendation. And I, so I think it, I think that, I think that's the intent, that the, the committee takes however long it needs to determine what to recommend to council, and then within, once the recommendation is made, within 30 days, it's placed on council agenda.
Well, I'm not an English major, but if you read that, I think it says the recommendation must be forwarded, and then it closes within 30 days. So, yeah, you've got some verbiage problems there.
Even if it was to go to city council within 30 days upon a recommendation? That's pretty quick, sometimes we have full schedules.
Nothing personal, but that's, that's moving it. What's your interpretation of item three, Mr. Attorney? Or you're not gonna get involved in this discussion?
I'm not sure where this was taken from, in terms of what other, I assume it was taken from policies from other places. Yeah. But it, it's just placed on the city council within 30 days.
You can always make a, an motion for an amendment.
Well, I would, I would have that sentence changed. I think my intention would be to have an overall timeframe on the whole process, so that it doesn't get shelved. But then, the, the timeframe for the whole process, I mean, is 90 days realistic?
I think so.
I mean, to research it and check it and to get it to council?
Yeah.
For the whole process, however you...
In terms of times, timeframe in front of the committee? Which, which timeframe?
Yeah, so you gotta meet with the committee and then come to council and...
So the whole thing, 90 days? Both, the committee and the council?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's perhaps talk about that, because, because, you know, myself, I'm good with it being undefined as to how long the committee's going to take. But once the committee comes to a recommendation, then it should be speedily acted on by being placed on the city, on the agenda for, for the city council, within 30 days of, of the recommendation, for, the recommendation being forwarded. So, so I like that, because then it doesn't put a, a timeline on city council of when they, they have to act. It just says that it just has to be forwarded within 30 days. Council can take, can take their time to review it. And, in, in, in my opinion, these permanent changes that the city's gonna have to live with forever, you know, more deliberation is better. And I would hate to see us put a, a time limit on what the committee may have to do to, to review something.
Make sure that the candidate is worthy of that cause, and that there aren't any skeletons in the clause.
Relative to that, I mean, it almost suggests...
Do, Mandy Reed has wanted to have something to say too?
I just had a question. Is there a process at all in place right now for this?
No.
I just didn't know if it was something that we were changing or...
No, there's no process in place now, and that's why we're, we're recommending some type of process or procedure to put in place. So if we have other requests that come in the future, we are following something that's consistent for everybody.
Are there some that are in the pipeline right now, waiting for?
Yeah, Chief Stefanik, former Chief Stefanik.
Perfect, thanks.
All right, back to Meisner.
I, Mayor, I would say if there is a desire to have council consider this for longer, then I would change this. So this requires that it be placed on a council agenda within 30 days. It doesn't mean the council has to approve it, but it does require, I mean, so you could still continue it, you could still have more discussion, but this actually says to have it placed on a council agenda within 30 days.
From, from, from when?
From when the recommendation is forwarded to council by the committee.
Yes.
So if that is not the intent of the council, then we should change, we should clean this language up.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
So just to be clear, you are saying that the committee could take six months?
Correct.
Once it's, once it's recommended, then it would be placed on an agenda for, within that 30-day period?
Correct.
I think that's very appropriate.
Gotcha. Okay, so what happens with my application that I submitted that never gets considered? And what happens to those applications that are submitted, because I wanna name one after my dog, which doesn't meet the parameters, but the point is, there doesn't seem to be any decision-making options here for denial. It's all...
Wouldn't that go through the regular committee that's originally doing that, but not in... That, that would be out before it even got to council.
Not necessarily. It says that they will seek comment from any pertinent stakeholders in making its recommendation. And so they only submit a referral.
I think you need a process for things that are approved by the committee and things that are not approved by, or not recommended and not recommended, or something like that.
I, if, if council desires, I think you could give the committee a timeframe to act. So it must act to recommend, or not recommend to council within, let's say, 90 days.
Just six months?
Or even just to review the application. Is there, can we put a, can we put a, a timeline just to review the application, and then?
Well, the fallacy here, seriously, is that if I submit an application, it could sit here for two years, because nobody wants to act on it. I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just telling you that that's not a good process.
Suggest an amendment, I think that's pretty easy to take care of.
But where does it go?
It would go, I think, as number, a new number three under Section 5. Something like...
Or number, okay.
Something like the committee shall act upon any application within...
Approve or deny?
Well, they just recommended.
City council.
They just submitted a recommendation.
Yeah.
So, so before, before we go further down on the timeline, so what happens is that, is that an application is received, the, the application is reviewed, and a recommendation is made, up or down?
Correct.
And so, so there, the recommendation does not mean they're approving, that the, that the, that the, that the committee is approving or saying, yes, this should happen. It's just that the committee needs to, to submit to council a recommendation, up or down, on the application.
And I, and I would say that if a request does not meet the qualifications, that the committee should deny those without taking them to council.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Does that need to be put into the ordinance as well?
It's there.
Okay.
It should, because...
I would just say, for applications for consideration, will be...
Well, you could still come back, I guess, to...
I mean, my, my concern would be that there is no appellate process, if you will, so I would still think that even if it's a recommendation of denial, it should be forwarded to council. That way, there's no question, but someone has due process.
Okay.
Because council gets an up or down vote with the recommendation of the committee.
In that recommendation, it would be nice if there was some clarification of that verbiage, that the recommendation to approve or deny...
It's pretty clear.
Where?
Number two. They shall make a recommendation to city council.
Councilmember Meisner is suggesting that to make a recommendation to approve or deny would be, would, would make you feel better? Would, would hit, hit what you're trying to do.
Well, I think we typically associate recommendation with an affirmative action.
Right.
And if they're not, if they're feeling like that they're not gonna send it to council for a recommendation, they'd say, well, we're not recommending it, so we're not gonna send it to council. I mean, you've got that far-fetched or outside interpretation of that verbiage.
Except for number four says it has to be submitted to city council.
But you know, when you're talking about deadlines and everything else, okay? I don't have a problem with the deadline or talking about city council, but unless the committee has certain guidelines in there as to when to receive it, for instance, say they don't have any guidelines, and I wanna submit a, a recommendation six months later, okay? Unless, the committee itself, once it's established, I think it's, it's gonna be the part that will make our part a lot simpler, okay? Because the committee should, when they get their committee, they should say, okay, you will have until this date to submit your request for, for what this ordinance is gonna deal with. Now, that closes the gap for people that wanna put something in. And now, that committee now has reasonable amount of time to deal with all those requests. So now they bring it to council with the timeline that we're talking about. But it's gonna be that committee's timeline that they establish that really is gonna run this. Okay, it is, because I don't see anything in here that says the committee, once it's formed, will establish rules as to how the process will be to submit a, a request for a name change, or a request for, you know, changing the name of a building. That's, I feel, is the first, most important part, and once we get that, in a sense, established, then that makes it easier also for the committee to bring something to us on council, so that we can act on it.
Is there a comfortable timeframe that you guys want to have for the committee to discuss this application? Or do you prefer just to have it open to what that committee feels is their need for their application?
I'll go back and reiterate what I've said is, when I turn in an application, I feel like that individual should know, in six months, I'm picking six months, I'm gonna have a yea or nay. It's just not gonna sit there. I mean, it's gonna move through the process and give ourselves a reasonable amount of time, give time to call that committee together, gather the facts, make a recommendation, get it to council, get it on council's calendar.
Okay, so what's that timeframe?
But see, I don't disagree with you, Miss Meisner, but the thing about it is, what you're saying is, without the committee having a deadline for receiving these, these requests, what you're talking about basically is mute, okay, because there's no deadline established from the committee.
I, I interpreted, Frank, that there, it's not intended for that, that if somebody... I, I interpreted, Frank, that there, it's not intended for that, that if somebody were to pass tomorrow, and they don't even have to be passed, if tomorrow-
They do have to be deceased.
I want to recommend Tim Payne, I should have the option, the way this is written now, I would have the option of submitting his name to the city, and once I do that, I think they, they need to have a timeframe to give me a decision.
Well-
And that's the way it's written.
Well, I could wait two years to make a recommendation to have this building changed to you. Where we at with, with the timeframe again, okay, for the committee? I think the most important part is, and then it can take care of what you're looking at, is there needs to be a procedure for that committee, once it's established. Let's get the committee established, and once it's established, then they can put their guidelines with regards to how they wanna work the procedure. And so, so that timeline that Jim is worried about can be completed, okay? They set a timeline of, of, the committee's established date tomorrow. Now, from tomorrow's date, you have six months to submit your request. Six months. And then they react on it. So now we know that during that timeframe, that's the only timeframe that somebody can submit a request for a name change or whatever the case may be, so that that committee can come and say, okay, we've received all of the requests for name changes, this is it, this is what we're gonna present to council to vote yea or nay.
Well, they don't come in that often. It's not like they come flowing in all the time that we need a deadline for applications. It's, it's pretty rare. Um, Councilmember Gonzalez did want to say something.
So Cindy, when you, when you pulled this ordinance, did, did you get it from another city that has this committee already in place?
I pulled three or four different ones, and then we, Ryan and I sat and talked about them and kind of pulled what we thought was best out of multiple to pull together. So they were from different ones that had their own committees, but I think we pulled from-
So, why can't we take-
Two major ones and two other ones.
Take a look back and see what their procedures are?
Yeah.
And, and just build a guideline off of what we think, the same way, just what we think is best suited for our community.
But that went to legal, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it did, and there is a procedure in here.
Yeah.
Councilmember Meisner.
Oh, I'm, I understand what Frank's saying, is, in that, correct me if I'm correct, Frank, correct me if I'm right. You're saying like, submit your applications from January through June, and then we have a timeframe from there. I, that doesn't matter to me.
I think this is the first time we've ever had a request, well, except for under Tony O'Rourke's administration where we named city hall after John C. Havens who worked for Canyon City as an attorney for twenty, over twenty-five years. Other than that, this is the first and only request that I'm aware of that we've had to name another city building.
Didn't we do something for, uh, the Parks guy? John Havens?
It's just John Havens.
No, the Parks guy.
Hardy?
No.
Griffin?
Tim, what was the, what was the guy from the Parks that?
Oh, your name, the bridge down here?
Something. Was that us or you guys?
That was you guys.
Griffin.
You and Griffin.
Was it like twenty-five years ago or something?
No.
Nichols.
Nichols, John Nichols. I knew his name was John. There's something named, you're saying it's the bridge?
I think so.
There's something named, or is it the park over there?
No, I think it's the new bridge that connects to Tunnel Drive.
That's from the flat.
I, I think we, we have enough feedback that we can put-
Do something.
Yeah, put something together, and if council wanted to table this until the second meeting in October, we can bring something back to you.
Um, Councilmember Hockes, do you wanna table it for us, do you wanna make a motion?
Make a motion, if we go ahead and table this request, what we're looking, how many days you want?
Till October nineteenth?
Till October nineteenth.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I'll call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
The motion has passed unanimously, it will be tabled to a future meeting, and we appreciate you coming back with those recommended changes at a future date. We'll now move to item eight B. This is introduction and adoption by title only of resolution twenty, series twenty twenty, entitled, "A Resolution Approving an Additional Intergovernmental Agreement for Tax Increment Revenue Sharing Between the City of Canyon City, Colorado, the Canyon City Area for Reinvestment Expansion and Overlapping Jurisdictions."
Uh, so this is the agreements that we have with Four Mile Ranch, and, and their share, their participation within the urban renewal agreements with the city and their shareback. And we also have come to an agreement with the Southeast Colorado Water Conservancy District, which has agreed to no shareback. They, they've consented to just participating with the URA. And I'll ask the city attorney for any additional questions or comments.
The only thing I would, the only thing I would add is that with those two agreements, that completes the process. Those were the last two taxing entities, so we now have either intergovernmental agreements or, in the case of Southeastern Colorado Water Conservancy District consent. And so with the action tonight on this resolution, plus the action by the Urban Renewal Authority, who's also a party to those agreements at a subsequent meeting later tonight, all of the intergovernmental agreements required for the creation of the Urban Renewal Authority and the approval of the plan would be complete.
Thank you, Corey Hoffman. Councilmember Meisner?
So do we actually have signed agreements from both of those entities?
We, we just, we have a consent from Southeast Colorado, which is all we need. Under the statute, you do not need an agreement if you have a consent. And then Four Mile has agreed, but they don't have a board comprised yet that is able to sign it, but their, their primary folks have agreed to this. So we will get them signed as soon as they can get their board comprised.
Any other comments or discussion from city council? Is there a motion?
I got a question, first of all. Based on what happened when we did the urban renewal, okay, and I gave my statement as to why I was against it, does this still fall under the same kind of-
No, I think those actions have been done, they've approved, so you are not confined in how you wanna act.
I just need a, I just need a-
I appreciate the question.
Deal back.
I'll call for a motion. Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
So, Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we approve by introduction and op, and adoption by title only, resolution twenty, series of twenty twenty, entitled, "A Resolution Approving an Additional Intergovernmental Agreement for Tax Increment Revenue Sharing." Last second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, council. The resolution has been passed unanimously. We now have item number C. This is the, do I need to read the whole thing, Corey?
Yes, mayor.
Okay.
I hate to say yes, but yes.
Item number C, introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance sixteen, series twenty twenty, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City stating the intent of the city to acquire certain property for the expansion of the city hall property and parking lot through the utilization of the city's power of eminent domain and directing the city's staff and city attorney to notify all persons affected thereby of the above-stated intent of the city and thereafter to comply with all pertinent provisions of CRS thirty-eight dash one dash one oh one, ETSQ relating to good faith negotiations." Does this go to you, Corey?
I think it does. I think I'm responsible for a lot of those words in that title.
Thank you.
And I apologize. Um, I'm gonna let Ryan go through the, the map in a minute, but what this ordinance does, if approved, is allow the city to essentially acquire what I would call the remnants of the city hall property that were not previously acquired from folks that are long since deceased. It would be acquired subject to the rights of the ditch, and if you have some right in title, you would do what's called a quiet title action. But since these are remnants that were not actually included in previous deeds, this is the only way to acquire it. And you, it's, you go through the process of eminent domain, even though frankly, there's not any owners. So what that means is the statute says you publish notice in addition to serving those parties that have an interest. And if one of Jacob Fix's heirs sees this and says, I have an entitlement to this property, then that individual would go to court and they would say, I wanna get paid for this property, and we would have that discussion then. But this is basically, gives a notice to the entire world, and my hunch is, no one will show up. But we have to go through this process.
So this is coming to us because of, let's say, a failure on the part of when this city hall was built to do proper title searches?
I don't know. We can't figure out from looking at the old documents why the city made the decisions it made at the time. So we can't tell if it was purposeful or not. Just don't know.
So the, for clarification, this was something done previously many years ago, and we're in the obligation to legally make things right?
Well, it, it's a matter of getting the parking lot, you know, getting the entire site into the city, into the city's name.
So, so E one and E two are the two parcels in question. E one partially is occupied by the city parking lot. E two is adjacent to the ditch and right there on RGB.
And, and mayor, to your question, though, we, we really did try to look and see what happened. We can't tell if there were circumstances at the time where the city decided it did not want to acquire E one and E two as part of the assemblage of the city hall site, but now we, now we need them, and so-
Because of the Constantino site, is that what triggered it?
Yeah, so looking at the Constantino site and replotting it, so, you know, we, we certainly, you know, that brought, brought that to our attention.
And certainly the fact that the parking lot is-
It's already built.
Right, that, that makes this imminent.
So, so, you know, if you remember during the urban renewal process, there were ten of eleven factors that the Blight Study, Condition Study found. The eleventh factor is actually this right here, where possession is in the name of somebody else or the title work is not completely correct. So, uh, just another little factoid there.
So basically, Jacob Fix circa nineteen hundred, now is your time-
Right.
-to have clairvoyance and speak to council.
Well, and, and honestly, I've, this is not uncommon. It's frustrating, but not uncommon. I, I did a series of these for another community, and every so often, an error will see something in the newspaper, they will come with their, with their chain of title to show that they are somehow entitled to this. But this property frankly has very little value for purposes of just compensation. The city's piece in E one, I, there's something, it's what's known as a title curative condemnation, and the fact is that since we possess it, frankly, it, it's unlikely there'd be any compensation due. E two, there would likely be some if someone showed up, but again, we think it's highly unlikely.
All right, Councilmember Meisner.
Well, first of all, it'd be nice if we had real maps in our booklets here.
I know, it's terrible. It's bad.
I mean, all I got in the, in my booklet is this, so I'm trying to decipher what's going on. And second of all, I just wanna confirm, we're only talking about E one and E two, which were nineteen hundred and whenever we acquired city hall, and have absolutely nothing to do with the, the acquiring of the Constantino property?
That's, that's correct, and, you know, in relation to the ditch, we did have a meeting with the ditch board to, to discuss and, you know, make them aware that we're going through this process and being good neighbors, and, and let them know that their easement will be subject to this.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, and just, just for my information, the, did Constantino occupy any of these pieces of property?
It did not. These are all on the east side of the ditch.
Thank you.
And so what happened is when you're trying to put together the property to replat it, you need all the owners, and so you do the title work, and lo and behold, we found these remnant parcels at that point.
Councilmember Reed?
So I have two questions. The first is, I guess, and I don't know, maybe we don't have the answer to this either, how do we build a parking lot on land that wasn't ours? Like, that seems interesting to me. And then the second one is, is if someone does come out and say, E one is mine and I can prove it, what do we do then because we have a parking lot on it?
What we would do then is pay what you have to do in, in eminent domain, which is pay just compensation, pay whatever the value is. So there's two ways to look at this. If we have possessed it for eighteen years, we have it through what's called adverse possession, but only a portion of it is, is paved. So this is the way to confirm ownership once and for all, because when you do an eminent domain action, the final decision, the final piece of papers, is what's called a final rule in order, and that is a deed. It is recorded like a deed, it's just a court document that acts as the deed. So the deed we will get at the end of this is for E one and E two in the city's name. And as to your first question, we wish we knew. And again, we don't know from looking at the old documents if this was intentional or not, we just don't know.
I guess the comment that I would make on it is that as we continue to make other strides forwards for consistency and regulations, it appears that the city was able to do something that many community members would definitely have had a lot of struggles to be able to do even within the rules and regulations. So I'm hopeful that, seeing this and it being so long ago, is just an encouragement for us to continue to clean up those regulations, make sure that we're all on the same page going forward, so that way this type of situation doesn't continue to happen, because it doesn't look favorably when the city's able to build a parking lot on land that's not theirs, but other people may be struggling to be able to do things on their own private property.
Well, that's why I said in the beginning, this is not, this is not something that this council has done, I wanna make that clear. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I had it pushed. My question was honestly how much, how much would these parcels cost if we had to, you answered that question, you said it's not, it's not very much, so that was my only question.
Sure. Councilmember Meisner?
Hold on to your seats, 'cause I'm gonna defend the city here. I mean, over, over my tenure of six years or so, we've probably had four or five situations at least where we've had encroachment on property lines, particularly up in Lulu Land up there, where-
Just imagine.
You know, property lines run through people's houses and garages that nobody knew about that-
Did you call Mandy's constituents living in Lulu Land?
So, I mean, it's a real part, it's a real problem in certain areas of, of the city where there's encroachments on property lines, and property lines aren't where people thought they were, and until they get verified, then-
And for clarification, those have also been remedied, thanks to the Dawson Ranch HOA. They took that upon themselves to fix those, and so this has been a council of fixing mistakes of prior officials. Um, Councilmember Hockes?
This is actually just history. When the city was looking at the property here to buy this, I know we, we had a lot of complications then because Department of Corrections had certain things located within this area, and they had, what, what can we do to get this and what can we do that? That was one heck of a process that the city went through, and I can see, when they was doing that way back then, to get the building and the property with the Department of Corrections and everything, where something like this could have actually been ignored and all that. So I, I hope now, maybe we can get it all straight, and like Jim said, we got-
And like Jim said, we got a lot of problems, not just here, but, you know, kind of everywhere and all that. So let's hope now, at least we'll have some clear identification that we own what we own.
Well, and also the defense of the city, I have talked to, I had a local attorney too. And apparently there was a lot of leeway in doing title work in our history where she said that she goes back to get title work and they're like literally written on napkins from sixty years ago. And it does not do anybody any favors. And so, I don't know.
It's very hard to record napkins with the clerk and recorder's office.
So anyhow, I think we've had our say. Is there any other comments before I ask for a motion?
My intention would never be to offend anybody in terms of Lulu Land.
At least you didn't say Loco Land.
That's right.
Go ahead, Councilmember Meisner.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we approve resolution- Ordinance fifteen of series, fifteen, ordinance sixteen, oh man, series of twenty twenty.
Second.
Do I need to read the whole thing?
Since the mayor did, you do not.
You're welcome.
On first reading.
Thank you. There has been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? And I'll call for a vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, council. That has passed unanimously. We are now on item nine, number nine A, and that's to go into the executive session. And Councilmember Meisner, would you like to call that?
Sure. Madam Mayor and Council, I move that city council enter into an executive session for the purpose to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E regarding the city's agreement with the Royal Gorge Bridge Company.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? And the only discussion I have is that we're going to hold the executive session here in council chambers. So we'll ask Commissioner Payne, Brandon, and our clerk, Cindy Foster, to go to the room adjoining. And after the executive session, we'll adjourn city council meeting and we will move over to the next meeting over for our URA meeting. So I will call for a vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes? Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Well now-